Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our regular board meeting, August 21st, 2025, at 6:00 PM, located in the Estill County Board of Education Boardroom at 253 Main Street in Urban Kentucky. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Once again, welcome everyone, and we always open our meetings with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everyone, there's a sign-in sheet at the entrance to the boardroom if you'd like to sign in. Mr. Brock, do we have any revisions to this agenda?
We do. On action items, item L, it should say Estill CMA contract.
Okay, that's noted. And that brings us down to our action items. First on the agenda, we have consideration for approval of the 25-26 A R C chair persons for the Estill County School District.
It's something we have to every year approve, who can chair A R Cs for the school district. It's my recommendation that we approve.
I need a motion for approval. Sharon Whittaker makes a motion, Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote at this time. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote. Next, we need to set the 2025 tax rate for real and personal property and vehicle and water craft. Mr. Brock?
So, this is also something we do every year at this time of year. This year, it is my recommendation that we leave the tax rate the same with exoneration. So, we'll leave real estate and personal the same as it was last year, and vehicle and water craft.
So, I need a motion to set the tax rate as discussed. So, Tammy Hardy makes a motion, Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries with a five oh vote. Next, we have consideration for approval of the change of bank account signatures.
This is something also that anytime we have a change in leadership at other levels, we have to add people, take people away from the bank account. Has to be approved by the board. Obviously, we have some new principals in the district and some people that we want to add to be able to sign checks. And so, it's my recommendation that we approve the change in the bank account signatures.
I need a motion for approval of the change of bank account signatures. Sheila Samples makes a motion, Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? Those accounts hurt citizens.
Mm-hmm, they are. Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries with a five oh vote. Next, we need consideration for approval of the second reading of the policy 03 dot 1233 regarding maternity leave.
Yeah, and this is the second reading last week, last week when we had our special call meeting, we talked about it. It's just an update of the wording so that there's clarity on what we are going to do going forward. It's my recommendation we approve.
I need a motion for approval.
Well, sorry, I do have a question. So, how it's like maternity leave, miss, be requested in writing as soon as employee knows. But, okay, so say I'm due August 29th, and I have it, I had it July 29th, but so I'm not in 30 days. Does that count? Does that matter?
You still, you'll still get, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
We won't deny leave. It's just the wording as soon as they, they know they may need leave. But, we'll be flexible on those days depending upon when the, when the baby was born.
Sorry.
You're fine.
But you can't be nine months in and tell us.
Right.
Oh, by the way, I need all.
Yeah. So, I need a motion for approval of the second reading of the policy. So, Sheila Samples makes a motion, Sharon Whittaker makes a second. Do we have any further questions or discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have consideration for approval of the updated employee handbook. Once again, this is a yearly thing.
It is a yearly thing, and then we have to update also based on new laws, K R S. This specifically will be updated concerning House Bill 141, Senate Bill 181, communication. And, and there's a few others, but it's just an update. I'll go over all of them because they also tie to the district discipline code down here in just a little bit, so. But, it's an update to meet requirements for new laws. Also, within this one, we had to change our wording somewhat on personal days and carry forward. The state limited the number of days of sick days that could be carried forward that they would reimburse for, and then anything above that, the district would be responsible for. Our people will still have the same amount of days, but some of them will be emergency days rather than personal days. That way, what they carry forward for sick days will be covered by the, the state when it comes to retirement. They'll still be carried forward. We just had to change that wording a little bit.
I need a motion for approval of the updated employee handbook. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries with a five oh vote. Next, we have approval of the interagency agreement with South Central Head Start. Once again, that's a yearly thing.
It is, and that's where we partner with them on some things for our Head Start out at South Urban. We, Ms. Hall has looked at the contract. I've looked at it. We finally got back and forth, and it's where we're ready to approve it. So, it's my recommendation we approve.
I need a motion for approval of the interagency agreement with South Central Head Start. Tammy Hardy makes a motion, Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Do we have any discussion? Anything, Ms. Hall?
Yeah.
Any agreement is similar as it was before?
It's the, it's, we didn't get it till almost spring last year, but it is the same, yes.
No issues, late.
So, I need to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries with a five oh vote. Next, we have consideration for approval of our federal funding assurance.
And like this time of year is, this is also a yearly thing. It's where we have to put in a statement for our federal funding assurances so that we can get the, the matching funds back. It's my recommendation we approve.
I need a motion for approval of our federal funding assurances. Sharon Whittaker makes a motion, Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? I'm sorry, I'm kind of speeding through these because some of these are yearly things, so.
They are, they are, yeah.
And so, we had all of it sent to us before, so. Next, we have consideration for approval of the 2026 National League Conference in Washington, D.C. for the Estill County Middle School Student Council.
This technically isn't a yearly thing, but it has become a yearly thing because Mr. Flynn always takes student council and leadership to the leadership lead conference in Washington, D.C. It's a great opportunity for our students. They always come back excited about what that they have saw there. There's always, usually there's implementation of student leadership projects and ideas within the school system, too. It's something that I think our students need to continue to be able to take part of. It is my recommendation that we approve.
I need a motion for approval for the children, for our kids to go to league conferences in Washington, D.C. Sharon Whittaker makes a motion, Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Motion carries with a five oh vote.
If they ever need any chaperones.
Yeah, I've been before. It is a lot of fun. I've been. I went on a lot of school trips to a point that my kids didn't want me to go anymore.
Sheena was, like, Sheena was the same way with me.
They didn't want you to go anymore.
I loved North, my mama.
Yeah. Um, next, we have consideration for approval of the 25-26 district discipline code.
Yeah, again, this is an update that has to do with new laws. House Bill 142, which deals with the nicotine lack for the cessation, cessation project for the first time offenders. We've got the cell phone policy, which defines the instructional day from drop-off to pickup, which is exactly what K D E defines it as, because that's what they reimburse us for when we're looking for times and hours. Communication, which that also goes back to the, the policy that we approved for the handbook, which is traceable communication. We'll only use traceable communication. And then the K D E medication requirements update, which is something that we, we put some information out on social media a while back. And it's all in response to new laws and regulations, and so we want to update our district discipline code to reflect that as well. It's my recommendation we approve.
I need a motion for approval of the 25-26 district discipline code.
I've got something to say. So, at the high school or wherever, whatever school, so do they get to keep their phones? Or do they have to put them in the locker or put them in a pouch or what?
We are, we, the, the policy is we should not see them during the instructional day. Yeah, we're not going to search kids and look for them, but we should not see them during the instructional day.
And we sent out a memo on social media regarding that already.
And we'll send another one out either early next week, probably.
So, we need a motion for approval of the 25-26 discipline code. Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Do I have a second? Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Do we have any further questions or discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries with a five oh vote. Next, we have consideration for approval of our special education procedures. Mr. Brock?
So, this one and the next one, I'll go ahead and talk about both of them together, but we will do them individually as voting. K S B A had updated some policies and procedures under the guidance of Teresa Combs, and that's something that our board needs to adopt. We had not done that yet. So, this is just an update of the recommendations that she had worked with K S B A as far as putting them in place. So, that's both for the special education and the 504, but we need to do them one at a time. But, it's my recommendation that we approve.
K S B A has a clause in our policies and procedures that said we will operate under our policies and procedures. And so, she doesn't work for them anymore, so these are, they are separate, but she is still the guru on it and updated them for us.
Okay, perfect. So, let's start with the first one. I need a motion for approval of the special education procedures. Sharon Whittaker makes a motion, Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? Any questions? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? So, the motion carries. And then I need approval of the 504 policy and procedure updates. Do I have a motion? Sheila Samples makes a motion. Tammy Hardy makes a second. Any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? So, that's a five oh vote, and the, and everything passes. Let's see, next, we have approval of the Estill C S D contract.
CMA, that's one, the one that changed.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So, this is tied to our municipal advisor, which is the selling of bonds and other services that the, they offer the district. We met with three different ones. Ms. Isfert was part of those meetings. And so, we had Baird, who we were currently with, or currently with. We had RSA, and then we had Compass. And after the, look, after the presentations and discussing with Ms. Isfert and the committee, it's our recommendation that we go with Compass Municipal Advisors. They had a more tailored approach to our district. They want to be more hands-on in supporting us and supporting us in planning. Not that it matters because we had already interviewed and discussed, but Wolf County, they work with Wolf County, and their superintendent had contacted me and after, after the meetings, actually, and after we'd already discussed, and just praised their work within the district and said, basically gave them credit and said, I've worked with them and I've followed their guidance, and they're a big part of the reason we've been able to do the facilities that we've done. So, that was nice to hear that, too, but just their approach of wanting to be involved in our district and come in and look and help. It's a different approach rather than just the selling of bonds and, and kind of there if you need us, they, they really want to come and help us grow. So, that's why it's my recommendation that we approve the contract.
So, I need a motion for approval of the Estill CMA contract, and that would be with Compass.
Yes.
Sharon Whittaker makes a motion, Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion?
When will that taken to effect?
As soon as we sign in.
Oh, okay.
And there, which we, it is a contract, but it's basically like a 30-day contract. As long as we like their services, we'll continue with them, but we do have options in the near future if, if they don't provide the services that we need.
So, then notification to Baird, then, is that?
I will, as soon as we approve it, I will notify, notify, after we leave, I will notify both Baird and RSA and Compass of who.
And I would just like to say that Baird has done an excellent job for us.
They have, yeah, I, I know.
We've been in a longstanding relationship with them, and we had three different groups that we interviewed, and all of them had good ideas and good things, but we really felt like Compass was going to meet our needs.
Uh, I, yes, I agree with that. I mean, it's not that the others were bad or had provided a bad service at all. There was just more of like a hands-on, seem-like and a tailored approach, and that's kind of what we were impressed with.
So, I need to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote. Um, next, we have consideration for approval of a bond of treasurer.
So, that's for, that would be for Mr. Ghost, where we just hired him into the financial position. We already have Ms. Howe bonded, and this would also be for him as well, bonding him as well. So, it's my recommendation we approve.
So, I need a motion for approval of the bond of treasurer for Mr. Ghost. Sheila Samples makes a motion, Sharon Whittaker makes a second. Do we have any questions or any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote. All right, Mr. Brock, bring us down to the consent items.
Got the approval of the July minutes and the special call minutes last week. You all have those. Treasure report and the paying of bills, we have those as well. No superintendent travel since the last board meeting, but that's just kind of a standing agenda item, but I don't, I don't have any sense to ask. And it's my recommendation we approve them.
I need a motion to approve the consent items as an, as a whole. Sheila Samples makes a motion, Sharon Whittaker makes a second. Do we have any questions or any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote. Um, next, that brings us down to Mr. Brock's superintendent report.
Okay, and then part of my report tonight, we don't have it on there, but I'll give each principal just a few minutes to talk about the, the coming of school as well. Um, start of school is upon us, and it's been a long summer, but a good summer. I, I, I think we're kind of in that point where everybody's feeling the rush to get ready, even though we've been preparing for it for a while. Personnel-wise, we're in pretty good shape. We did post a paraposition today, but we'll get that filled. Open house, I've got those that's coming up on the high school and West Urban and Estill Springs is on the 26th. The middle schools is on the 28th, and then, of course, we have kindergarten camp tonight. Uh, we're still, as you all know, a little bit away from the start of school, so we will pick up some numbers between them now and then, I'm sure, and I talked to Mr. Norton about that today. There's always a rush right before school starts, but as of right now, the high school is sitting at 597. The virtual academy is sitting at 56. The middle school is sitting at 450. Estill Springs is sitting at 489, and West Urban is 453. Kindergarten enrollment is 76 at one and 65 at the other, so we're almost on our target is, is what, we like 75 each place a year, so we're almost on that target. as, as what, we like seventy-five each place a year, so we're almost on that target.
How much was that, West Urban?
Six, or four fifty-three.
And then what was the?
Seventy-six kindergarten at Estill Springs, sixty-five kindergarten at West Urban.
People ask me questions like that lots of times. They'll say, "How many kids are in school?" So I always try to have an idea.
Yeah, so two thousand and forty-five total.
I'm sorry, is this an increase or decrease?
It's, so from the end of the year last year, it's down a little bit, but it's about on par with where the beginning of the year was last year. And we fluctuate some. We'll, uh, but we, I expect we'll pick up another ten or fifteen before the start of school. We always do.
We do.
That's kinda been the tradition since I've been on the board. We'll get a rush right before school starts. It's, people decide they don't wanna homeschool, or people will move into the district, and then we end up with.
And we do the same thing.
And then Ms. Hall probably has some that wasn't gonna go to school, but then all of a sudden they're gonna go to school, so.
Yeah.
Um, so that, that, that's great.
And then we'll give each, Ms. Hall, do you wanna give us just a brief?
Yes, I'll tell you our numbers. We are dealing with a hundred and five students. Uh, we did do screenings. We, we've done screenings for the last two days, so we were able to qualify some three-year-olds for intervention over the last couple of days. We'll get those in classrooms. And the last two days, we've also completed home visits. We have one more day of home visits, and that's next Friday. We're in training all week, and then Friday we'll, we'll finish the home visits that we've been able to get in touch with. We're having a hard time getting. Well, they're just not answering their phones. I don't, and not calling us back yet. Maybe it's too early. So hopefully they'll call us back by next Friday. Our goal is to visit each home or a mutual place that the parent agrees upon before the kids come to school. So hopefully we'll get those completed by Friday of next week. Our open house is September fourth, from four o'clock to six o'clock. Welcome to come. And then our first day for kids is September tenth. You want me to speak about, um, our three-year-olds?
Um, no. Yeah.
We are very excited to get back into the building. Our kids have been, um, doing some wonderful things this summer. We had two students compete in the state fair for FFA, and they placed sixteenth and eighteenth out of fiftieth. This is the first time ever that the middle school's had students compete at the state fair, so we're pretty excited about that. Um, tonight, we actually have our girls' basketball team. They're playing right now, and then our football team is playing. We've increased our football numbers this year. Um, we actually have enough, uh, players for a seventh and eighth grade team and a fifth and sixth grade team, so we're pretty excited about that.
That's great, yeah.
Yes. Um, we also have ordered five new Paxton labs to come into Mr. Dixon's classroom, so we'll have robotics. We will have, uh, digital, um, gaming. We will have, uh, cosmetology. I'm trying to think of them off the top of my head. Um, crimina- uh, criminalistics, and then, I know I'm missing one, and I can't think of it right off the moment. Um, and then we have a new art teacher who's getting ready to have an art drop, so if you, uh, wanna pass that along. And then our digital art teacher, we have all the stuff in for them, ready to go, start their classrooms off, uh, with things for the kids, so we are pretty excited and ready to get kids back into the building.
All right, so, um, what is it?
Flat and drone.
Flat and drone is the other one for, uh, Mr. Dixon's lab. Um, so for the Success Academy, we're really excited to get this year started, um, starting with non-kids for right now, and some of them have come to us over the summer, so we're excited about that. Um, which is way more than we started with last year, so it will be, um, good to have a bunch of kids down here. And our three main things that we're working on this year, the first one is obviously our coping mechanisms. We want our students to be able to go back to their homeschool, which is the high school or middle school. So we're going to be having counselors working with my students individually on different coping mechanisms and things that they can use that will hopefully get them back to those schools. And so that's one thing that we're really excited about. Another thing that I am excited about is we're going to have another teacher down here with my students, Ms. Andrea Banks, who's been at the middle school since I was in middle school, and is going to be coming down here, and I think she's gonna be a great fit working with my students, so I'm super excited about that. And that will just give us more hands-on, being able to work with our kids with more direct instruction. So we're really, um, glad to have her joining our team. We're also moving AER from the high school and middle school down here with me, um, so I will have all of the AER students down here, so. And we will be transitioning and working on how exactly we're gonna be doing all of that, so we are ready to get that started as well. And then the other thing that we're gonna be doing is trying to get our students to see different careers here in Estill County that maybe they don't have to have a college education for, so different trades, um, just different things that they would like to do, um, that they could do if they stay in Urban. A lot of my students do stay here, and they don't know everything that we have available as far as, um, careers go. So if you know anybody or have anybody that would be interested in letting my kids come to them and see what they do, or would like to come here and speak to my kids, I would really appreciate that as well, because we're trying to get that program started at least once a month, um, to start out, to try to see if, um, we can get some volunteers to let us come and see different jobs, so that's what's happening here.
Next on deck, we have Mr. Rogers. He's our new high school principal.
We are more excited to come back than the middle school. We have a lot of collaborative efforts with the middle school this year, so we're excited about that and seeing what that looks like. Um, fall sports are rolling. Um, football's had a couple of scrimmages showed very well, and they're healthy. That's the most important thing. Um, other fall sports are kicking off. Suckers have each played several games. Volleyball is going. Um, first live football game is tomorrow night, uh, on the road, so, um, a lot of activity around the school, which has been fun to see. Our facilities have kinda gotten a facelift, uh, over the summer, so they're, they're looking good and starting to shine up. And, uh, our first phase, I think we talked about before, was getting, uh, the common areas, the hallways, bathrooms, and the entry areas and entries into classrooms all cleaned up. So they've all got fresh paint, and it's amazing what new paint does. Um, it's amazing how many times you have to go back and re-screw floors when you spill paint, so. We've gotta deal with some of that as well, but, but things are shined up and looking nice, and, um, anything else we do will be exterior, uh, just kinda welcoming folks as we come in. Um, our leadership team has been meeting daily for the last couple of weeks, and, uh, we've got a lot of things to figure out, so we've been able to streamline some processes. We've had to make some adjustments to our master schedule. Um, we have a lot of new programs, you know, coming in. I think, uh, multimedia arts and, uh, we have some aeronautic stuff as well that, that will be going on this year, open science curriculum. Um, a lot of new opportunities for kids, and I think things that are gonna excite kids and that they will embrace. But we've been focused on streamlining those processes. We were able to pick up some additional instructional minutes by going from, uh, four lunch periods to three. We were able to tweak the way that we operate under our club's schedule, um, and give those clubs that really need that time, substantive time to have it, um, and kinda repurpose some of that time that might've been not as productive in the past, so. Looking forward to that as well. Our, our theme for the year has, has kinda been embrace the journey, um, with a lot of change happening and a lot of things happening quickly. We really wanna create a culture where all hands on deck, everybody's willing to do whatever needs to be done to serve our kiddos, so. Um, a lot of site-based meetings. We've had three over the last couple of weeks for the same reason as you've had to make all the adjustments to every type of document district-wide with new legislation. That trickle-down has meant we needed to adjust ours, so we think we've got everything aligned now. Um, and are starting to communicate some of those changes to different folks, and we're just ready to get kids back. That's the best part, isn't it? Yeah.
When's the first home football game?
Next week.
Okay.
And we're several home runs in a row, correct?
Yes, like five.
Oh, gosh.
Ms. Bryant, do you have anything for us today?
We're just talking to, we've got a whole, just played us together, we've been seeing a lot of, I, daily are talking to parents and getting new IUPs in, so we are excited to start the school year. Thank you.
Mr. Reese, do you have anything to report?
Uh, I'd like to give a shout-out to the fire department.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Let's, let's get this on, on, on the air.
We're waiting on the sweeper truck to go through our bus loops, and we've been trying our best to weed, paint, touch up, mark, parking spaces and everything, so. We should get right out of the gun like we do every year.
Yeah, and, uh, the maintenance crew has done an unbelievable job this year. Shout-out to them. And if you didn't get it when he had the microphone, the fire department, thank you for coming and watching the front of buildings. You do that every year. We appreciate it so much. It makes, uh, our job easier to help clean everything up along with that truck. And, uh, everybody's done a phenomenal job. I can't brag on everybody enough in this room. The leadership teams that's not in this room because they're in their buildings or, uh, and they're supporting kindergarten camp. A lot of our directors are supporting kindergarten camp tonight, and I asked them to go there to support that, so. Uh, we've got a great team, uh, with new blood, new leadership. Looking forward to the school year. It's gonna be a good one, so. And Todd would not shout out for himself, but he's done an excellent job getting prepared, uh, not just with maintenance, him and Shane, but also, uh, making sure that our safety, uh, is an eighty, uh, that our safety procedures and stuff are up to date. I know he's met with Mr. Rogers. But then also, we've got all of our, uh, emergency service personnel coming for walkthroughs and stuff.
We in state.
Yeah.
At nine AM, starting at the middle school.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Reese.
I didn't mean to steal your thunder. That may have been what she was talking about.
Um, I think the last person in the room is Mr. Simpson, and he may have an announcement for us.
And it is not his fault that we were late tonight. I will take full responsibility for that.
He, he may have an announcement.
He's an addition. He's a big new addition.
He's not proud at all.
There it is. Look at that.
I am very proud of these, uh, you don't do a whole lot of work right now.
I don't, I don't know that that's true. I bet he pulls a lot of heartstrings.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So I have one question. There's not been any change in pickup or drop-off of kids at any of the schools?
There have been some refinement of procedures. I know that there's parking spaces now painted, uh, for them to pull into and to find. Uh, for details on what those changes would be, that you would have to speak with principals, but the lines should be the same and in the same places. I know there's gonna be a little more supervision and some different things like that, yeah.
Okay. I think we got everybody. So that brings us down to our board member forum. Does anyone on the board have anything to report? Um, I have something. Um, September the eighth, um, our district will be hosting KSBA. They will be coming to town, um, and we will have guests from a lot of different counties from the upper Kentucky River region. So they'll come from Hazard, Breathitt, um, Owlsley, Lee, Estill, and Wolf. I think that's it. Um, so we will be having a, a district, uh, meeting, and we will be hosting that, and we'll be providing food. And some of our principals, uh, will be getting some information out to you about participation and bringing students. Um, we'll try to do that this week, um, but I wanted to share, um, that we will have that, um.
Do we have a theme this year?
Not really. Yeah, not really.
The Last Dance, because it's the last year we're doing.
Okay, Last Dance. Sounds like a plan. So I, I, were there any public comments, Mr. Simpson? Okay. So next, we need to go into closed session, and I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to KRS sixty-one point eight-ten, paragraph F for the person of discussion, which may lead to appointment, discipline, or the dismissal of an individual student or employee. So, after that, you, I mean, you all are dismissed, but I need a motion to go into closed session. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Sharon Whittaker makes a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.